We are in Pohaska, Oklahoma. Meeting up with Ron Durbin from Gorilla Publications. We've got a town hall meeting tonight. There's his truck. Here's the parking spot. So... Let's go see Ron.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item number seven. Discussion and possible action to convene an executive session pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma State's Twenty Twenty-One Statute Three Oh Seven B Four to discuss Stephen L. Holcomb versus City of Pohaska, CB dash two oh two three dash D two.
I'm making a motion to convene a discussion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jerry, why can't you show us your chest so we can see all those tattoos? You can prove it right here, Jerry Bear.
So now I'm broadcasting.
I came this week, this first meeting I come to.
Great.
And I'm here and all I can do is this clown sitting there talking, everybody just listening.
Yeah.
But what about you?
Yeah.
I don't have any... I don't have anything against the guy.
Man, I thought it was rude when she had the police escort me out of the meeting when I was speaking during the last three minutes. Well, I understand, but if you knew the history, you'd understand why I said that to her. She kicked me out with the police out of a public meeting while I'm speaking during my three minutes with threat of arrest. So if you do that to me, I'm sorry, it's all fair game. She did that to me, so I'm probably out of the way. I understand, but your wife got in the middle of it. She could've just kept to herself. It probably is, but you know what I think is weird? When they give this guy this pro twenty-five thousand dollars of y'all's hard-earned, taxpayers' hard-earned money, they don't withhold the taxes, and he uses that money to pay off property he stole from another city. That's the problem I guess. She's the one, she and the other two others, the ones signing those checks. She signed that twenty-five thousand dollar check and leaked the whole taxes program. She kicked me out of the public meeting when I'm trying to explain to them that their financials and their keep theft, like keep that in the middle of my three minutes, a minute and a half into it, by that time, right over there. Her arrest. I don't, I don't, I need some money unless they come to me first. I'm always nice at first to everybody. She stepped in the middle of something she didn't understand, and that's, you get a, you get a reaction. They're not gonna say anything to me there. So we can't even get them to give us, we finally got Jerry's contract. So we got, we got Jerry's contract today. The man gets five hundred dollars a month for a vehicle, yet he turned in a six hundred dollar... Aren't they? They're like my favorite, one of my favorite pair of shoes. They, they aren't them.
Boy, it smells like cigarette butt out here. We got some chatter out here that's, uh... You heard her once I walked out. Oh, that's one of his followers. Not a follower, we're believer, lady believer, not a follower. Believe he's gonna make history. Hmm.
Well, to clarify one thing, I did not threaten to kill eighteen. Well, that's what did you, uh, Laurie's uncle try saying. Oh, she's threatening to kill the cops.
I like the shirt.
Thank you.
All right, I got you, man, I got you.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Everybody left their room, this first meeting I've ever attended, so I didn't know, like, what happened. They on recess or?
Yeah, they're on recess. They'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay, cool. Just to make sure I wouldn't hang out for something else I wasn't trying to be hanging out for. Is it? He's just not happy. The wall. That lady just does not look happy about none of it. None, not very happy. Wish to cheer her up. Back that way. Yeah. There's a group out front though. Oh, Paulie Ron.
Being polite and pretending like everybody's operating the same way hasn't worked. Asking politely being nice has not worked.
We are also recording with another device to be able to pull ambient sound out, so we'll be able to hear anything and everything everyone's saying, including them way over there. Pretty cool technology. Unsuspecting folks just don't even know. See what Sandy's seeing.
I think police chief has a guy named Forrest Smith. He's got a history, some old car chief that's like, oh my god, not good. Yeah, I gotta go to a car chief.
Old car chief, where's that at?
Out west.
Panhandle area?
Not all the way to the Panhandle, but like out there in the, in the windmill territory. You know, you know, trying to put windmills out near Lake Fallow and not get killed.
There's a big thing going with the windmills, I'm chasing that too.
Do you know how much, yeah, so people, so the people on here, and the people, y'all let me know too. The people on here, say the little baby Jesus, uh, global underscore Jesus on YouTube, being all serious. Somebody put that in the, one of the adverts, would you put that in there some, somewhere? Global underscore Jesus, y'all go over there and like and subscribe to his page as well. Uh, he drove out here from Polka City to be here, to be here today. I drove from Tulsa to be here today, um, to ask these questions of old Jer Bear Jerry Uvings.
Nobody's asking.
No.
Just this guy?
No. Well, somebody's gotta ask. I don't think it makes me very popular with some people.
No, that lady over there, she looked like she's having a very good time. The one in the red or pink. The one in the red? The best on it. She's on a cruise, I think.
Huh?
Oh well for her.
That's what I think, oh well for any of them. Oh well for any of them.
The cops seem decent, I mean, they're...
Well, except for the time that they kicked me out with the Susan Bayrod thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm pulling ambient noise right now, we'll be able to hear everything, it was saying this whole entire room, I'll go and, you always cancel it out. I'll hear what Sandy was over there talking about.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get done with it.
Well, have y'all hit the light button? Well, four hundred and something of y'all have, you know? Took two hundred and something of you, they couldn't seem to find that light button.
Helps that algorithm to help get it out to people.
Yeah. Make a T-shirt of this swastika pic. I'll, I, I, I got plans for the pictures from, uh, from Fairview. That's all indications that I have.
Prison, that's what runs down here in prison down here.
Well, he was in Arkansas.
That's garbage all bigger, bigger than there.
Oh, I know, I know. So he was, uh, he was in Arkansas and, uh, covered up, you know?
A big Mayflower or something.
Or something. Yeah, like, you know, here's the thing, as the people in the audience were saying, Jerry, that's why I asked him, Jerry, if you don't have anything to hide, show us, show us your chest.
Yeah.
If somebody told me, if somebody said I had a swastika tattoo.
I would've super mad it.
All right, I'd be like, you're gonna see my fat ugly self, but I'm gonna show you I ain't got a, I got a, I got a Donald Duck on my back.
Yeah.
Donald Duck on the cross, killed by Wall Street.
Yeah.
No, he's on the cross of Wall Street, 'cause we all hang at the cross of Wall Street, 'cause all that money owns us. It's how to take back America.
It is slavery.
It is, and that's why I got Donald Duck. It's, it's a character that, from a guy named Alec Monáe.
I'm gonna check your hat out here, too.
Oh, yeah, 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 kick you out, see my hat. It's my fa, it's one of my favorite hats.
First Amendment, one of the most important amendments ever.
Well, Susan, is this harassment? Yes, Susan, it's, it's called asking questions at a public meeting before you gavel in. And, uh, I, I just pray that people are dumb enough to arrest me for doing such things. Because I like money, and, uh, I, more reasons to sue you, uh, you know, better matter.
Bad for your career, that's, bad for your career. Arrest people, civil rights.
He escorted me out on that one. He escorted me out on that one. Yeah, that, uh, that's called a well-settled law. So, uh, qualified immunity is out the window on that one, yeah. In Tenth Circuit. Heck, even the Tenth Circuit's decision on First Amendment right to record police in government meetings, it literally, they didn't even give the first guy qualified immunity. They said there was enough decisions from the other circuits that he should've known.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so they didn't give the first guy qualified immunity. So they're certainly not gonna give anybody that comes subsequent to that qualified immunity. That was the Tenth Circuit in a twenty twenty case, that's a recent case.
That's cool.
That's why I like, that's why I like, I'm happy about the Tenth Circuit, let's stay in the Tenth Circuit. You know, Oklahoma, Colorado, uh, uh, what other states in the Tenth?
Kansas?
It's Kansas, yeah, Kansas is in the Tenth. I think that's the, I think that's the extent of it, so, anyway. What you guys talking about in here? Let me see what, let me see if I can read it. Can somebody explain what that executive session's about? Do you understand it?
Yeah, Steve Holcomb, uh, filed a lawsuit alleging that our ward system is unconstitutional.
Oh, you what? What's unconstitutional?
Our ward system that they use for our city council.
Okay, how so?
Um, according to Steve, it's unconstitutional to have the ward system.
Okay.
That means like, you can only run for ward seat one if you live in that area. And the map that we have for the ward system is literally colored pencil. I'm not joking. The official map is colored pencil.
Well, you don't have, I would not think you were joking, y'all have Jerry Uvings as a symbol. I'm surprised it's not in crayons. Colored pencil's like a step up from crayons.
So that is ready for summary judgment, and so that's why Steve has extended the offer to let them, instead of having to have the judge tell you, yes, what you're doing is unconstitutional, let them fix it before they get that judgment.
Right.
So that's what they're...
So that could impact the elections that are coming up in February?
I don't know that it will, um, since that's already, they've already filed.
No, it would if it's, it would kill those elections, 'cause the whole system would have been declared unconstitutional, they'd have to re-adopt something.
If they got it fixed in time.
It's gonna be interesting.
If they did agree to adopt that and then change the charter.
Based on what you've read of the lawsuit, would that be something, would, would the man winning be favorable to the citizens of Pohaska for representation?
I mean, anybody could run for any of the places. It wouldn't matter where you live.
Okay, okay, interesting. What about, I read something, I think I saw something that said if you paid on the water district too, that you'd have some right to vote or something.
I would, I would think that you would, but right now, if you don't live within those, the boundaries of those wards, you don't, you don't have a right to vote. Even if you have city utilities, your kids go to school here, you don't have the right to vote in any city election.
Sounds real privileged.
Yes.
Well, sounds, sounds very controlled to keep things like Jerry Uvings.
Wonder how much the real estate is in those areas? How much you gotta make a year to be able to live there?
Well, more, more to the point of like, it's, people have lived there for forever.
Right.
So like, you know? Yeah, that's interesting, thank you, I might, somebody could explain it. I saw it. Oh, the city attorney, she tipped her name down. I think she, she's ready to get out of here, that's for sure.
So we just come here and it's just listen to them all say aye? Is that what this is about? 'Cause that's what I kinda gathered. Really? Yeah. We don't listen to people.
But, you know, it's actually against the open meetings act, when they talk about business.
Before.
As a core before these meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, oh my stuff, man, it's all staged it seemed, like this whole, the whole thing. They call out something, they all say aye, and then move forward to next thing, and that's it.
No conversation.
Yeah, no conversing in it. Yeah, depicting what it is even, what it really is.
I just like, everything I can see, I like taking a picture. You never know, you never know when you're gonna need it. If I can see it, I can take a picture of it. It's not so tough, so you're...
You gotta create your privacy. Create your own privacy.
Yep. Cops use it all the time, so, they let the press use it occasionally too. If we can see it, we can take a picture or video of it.
Oh, here they come. They're in peen in the process. Oh no.
She had a lock.
Lawyer's kinda cute, I think.
Did they, did she get her lock taken, taken that everybody else suffered from?
I have a motion in a second to convene a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, how can I action regarding items discussed in the beginning session? We have no action. Item number eight, comprehensive and capital improvement plan. Develop, develop action plans for each project, including timelines, resources, and responsibilities. Implement strategies, develop new working sessions, monitor progress, and make adjustments needed. So in regards to this, you guys have your, um, notebooks in front of you. I have been discussing, uh, the comprehensive plan and capital improvement plan with other entities such as the O Sage Nation Casino, trying to find entities that can come and, uh, know what we're doing, and if they're willing to participate or help us in any way, to let them know what we're doing, what we're working on, moving forward on something that we haven't done before. And I've let them know this is very new for us. And I have been talking with other entities, and they're very excited to participate and help us in any way. I can tell you that the O Sage Nation's Grants and Compliance Department has also provided assistance in coming up with grants and coming up with a plan for that, so I've let them know, here we are. This is what we're working on, this is probably moving forward, and if they wanna help us in any way that they can, we're not relying on them. I'd like to know that this is something that we actually are doing.
Without any public input, with very little.
There's public input, we have questions right there, if you want to, if you have any, let us know.
You gonna kick me out again?
With very little public input. Let me rephrase that. It's a, it's a dictatorship.
I can't either. Don't know what you're talking about.
What do you want added to it?
Just resign.
Keep it to topic, or you will be...
That is topic.
It isn't, it has nothing to do with working sessions or asking me to pull them up.
Hasn't been...
Without you moving forward, we could get it off.
Truck that he sold to the city for five years.
Have you seen the capital improvement plan?
Yes, I have read it, yes. It involved a truck that's sitting up there with no motor.
That's what we're working on, that's what these sessions are for. Coming with the plan.
That's nefarious actions, Susan.
How is that?
How? How? Why would you buy a truck with no motor for five thousand dollars?
We're moving forward to be productive, we're coming up with...
An old truck, but you're gonna spend sixty thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars on a box truck that you need for something else? That improvement plan was stupid. I read it and was just in shock.
All of the items that are in comprehensive plan and capital improvement plan and coming up with a plan that wants word...
When you're talking in your O Sage Nation office with your people in there about what you guys in the council talk about, do you also include that in that conversation too?
No, just the capital improvement plan and comprehensive plan, those items are what was...
So you're allowed to talk like that with the other people you work at, at your other workplace?
They're part of the community as well.
Council business. But you won't talk to us about it, or allow us to talk about it, because you'll sit there and say, we're not gonna have the public input on whether or not we get that fund. Twenty-five thousand dollars?
Nothing to do with the capital improvement plan or the comprehensive plan, these are what these working sessions are for.
Have you reached out to any of the public members to ask them if they would like to contribute in the grant process or anything? No, you took it upon yourself to go up to the O Sage Nation. Yes, you did, you just said that, Susan. You just said that you have collaborated with outside entities.
I have let them know what the city is doing.
And you have talked to the O Sage Nation Grants and Compliance Department.
They have offered assistance.
Correct, but have you opened that up to any of the citizens or the community? Have you offered that to us? And said, would anybody like to come and help?
I'm letting you know that, yes, it's open to the public, we're open to listening.
How do we do that?
Go to the city hall, put in a plan, ask the...
You have a plan! I can't with you guys. Somebody wanted to interview Jerry, but he requested that they send him the questions upfront, and then he said, no, not that question, not that question, I don't wanna talk about that. No, because you denied, you denied an interview, 'cause you don't wanna do it. Taryn Reynolds offered you help with an audit with whatever she was doing, and you said, no, we hired one, and that was false. You did not.
We have the R and D still out on that, and that's what I told them.
Didn't the last company back out because you wouldn't give them any correct financials? Isn't that why the former company backed out? I'm asking the question, is it about, it's relevant to the same subjects?
Yeah. That gavel feels real good in your hand, doesn't it?
Can I borrow it? Oh, yeah.
Is a comment allowed on this?
Oh, wow.
I'll sign up, I just get on it.
So, I have a question on this one. We ask people to put comments and stuff on this. Uh, I have a question on this one for the, uh, Jerry Uvings for the travel. I'm wishing that it came to a five hundred dollar travel question, is this above and beyond that?
Yes, ma'am. It, uh, it give me a five hundred dollar travel allowance, but in section A, B of the contract, any official business...
We were just talking about a travel while y'all were in there.
I'm gonna call order.
Please don't interrupt the meeting. Stay on topic.
Thank you.
Travel six hundred miles.
Dude, seriously, this is a community meeting. No, don't, uh-uh. No.
We're gonna stay order in this meeting, we're having a...
Use my vehicle to travel six hundred miles to pick up parts for the generators. We also used the Dodge truck, those are only two trucks that we kept, they're carrying that amount of weight without damaging our halftime truck. So, yes, ma'am, like I said, on the contract, A, B stipulates that official business and travel will be reimbursed.
Is this the sixty-seven cent a mile, is that what we're talking about? So you could, you have mileage, and is that what we're talking about? 'Cause I cannot quite hear you. You, he gets sixty-seven cents a mile?
You ready? Well, as it relates to the money that you're on paying, I just wanted to make it clear to all the other city councillors that there were no federal withholding taxes withdrawn from any of that, which need to be taxed at thirty-seven and a half percent. Because it's a bonus. Well, you gave twenty-five thousand dollars, it doesn't indicate on the agenda, it does not indicate on the agenda what you're paying the man. So it doesn't say what you're paying the man for while you're giving him any money, so I'm talking...
Oh my god, here we go. This is what he was talking about and not letting citizens speak. Let the citizens speak.
That is on the agenda.
What are you doing? What are you doing? Why don't you just let him go and be done with it?
Is it a threat, is it telling me I have to leave, or you asking me to leave?
I'm telling you I have to leave.
Okay, that's all I need.
Jerry was on the agenda.
Susan, you screwed up again. Hey, city attorney, you can get that hair fixed by a little plastic surgery, man.
You are so great.
I know. Man, why did you have to do that again?
This is so ridiculous.
We're still in here.
So we're done with the mileage, we can't talk about the mileage anymore?
Was it given us three minutes, or ever, or him two minutes?
He wrote, he signed that up, we can't talk.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
What are we even talking about?
A second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve resolution PW twenty twenty-four dash eleven dash O two, authorizing application for emergency grant from the Oklahoma Water Record Board.
We did this last week, but I wrote City of Pohaska, and it needed to be under the public works toward. All I like is these two documents, this one and the next item, to be able to complete that. Excuse me. Make a motion to be approved?
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item number four, discussion of possible action to approve the verification for the emergency grant on the Water Resource Board.
Same thing. Make a motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let me on to the past community municipal question board and question meeting. Item number two, discussion of possible action to enter into an economic development agreement with Kevin Rowland on Mark one to four block six, through an addition, plus two.
This is the deal we got that previously worked out with them over a year ago, somewhere in there. We finally got it into a contract form and it's basically, uh, transferring these lots per this agreement over to Kevin Rowland for, uh, this one, $500. The two together were $1,500. This is a thousand dollars. Yes, sir. $250 a lot. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, good to meet you. For having this agenda on here. There's a couple of things that I would like to ask and talk to you about regarding, I'm gonna start with this lot. And then, it's okay, I've got some of the same information to go on some other stuff, but, um, I gave you a hand each handout. Item number, I think it's six, shows a lot, kind of a diagram that I put together. So on the contract, it actually asks for a dimension setback from the work in, uh, on fifteenth of thirty feet of easement for the city. And that's for, actually, I'm sorry, twenty feet of easement for the city. And that's for the sidewalk and access to the bridge and so forth. What's not in the contract that I would like to stipulate is that I would like to have that twenty feet also be a part of if I need it for the setbacks that you guys require me from the edge of the lot. Um, and part of that is because if I set the building I'm wanting on there from the other end, I start to encroach not that twenty feet, but over into that some. So I wanna have, and I've got it drawn that I gave you, item number eight. Um, I've, I've shown kinda how it's gonna be laid out on a lot.
Yeah, when, you're talking number six, right?
Item number eight, if you look at item eight.
I mean, first one was number six, right?
Correct, but I'm talking about item number eight shows some dimensions.
Okay, and, and just one clarification here because item two, which is the item you called for, was block one through four, block six, through an addition. Is that, is that what that is?
Um, so I wanna, and I don't know, I don't know if you have it on the contract or if it can be approved here or discussed here or whatever. But I don't have to have it in there, but it's pretty tight for me not to be able to use part of that twenty feet for the setback that the city requires in reference to a permit. So that's one of the things that I'm asking in this deal as part of this contract that currently is not written in the contract that way.
Okay, I'm gonna be laid out here so it's laying. So if we do this twenty foot back, is that gonna give you the local sidewalk in front of it with your stuff or the city?
Um, I'll have a driveway in front of each of these two houses, but I won't have a sidewalk that goes to the trees and then comes back just for my lot.
You will not?
I will not.
Okay, so this is about this, and I'm like, you know, I'm not trying to sub that as one of our curbs, I understand it. So you're, this is up here by the bridge, right next to school. And you, your comments were the first is we, we give you this setback because the room built between the bridges.
From the bridge going east, there's a sidewalk.
Okay.
I'm not touching it. I'm leaving it alone, but I'm not intending to put a sidewalk going south from that in front of the houses or anything.
Okay, yeah, I understand. We're fine.
So that's part of it. I don't know how you guys wanna address that. The second thing that I would like to talk to you about is, and it has to do with this because the discussion was had. When I started and I, I gave you, um, in the handout, I gave you items three and four, um, that show the current duplex, which is at Fourteenth and Parker. And it shows a picture of where it is as of now and inside, one picture of the inside. I'm almost done with it, but when I started this project, I talked to previous code enforcement and city manager. Actually, there wasn't city manager at the time, but the, I talked to the code enforcement, so the guy that told me. And I asked, when I created my budget, I asked what the costs were for implementing the sewer, tying in the sewer and the water to the duplex. And I was told $1,200. When I went to turn in the check to do that, which I'm trying to get it done, I was given a different amount. And I was told that it was $800 times three, one for the sewer and one for each of the meters that goes to each of the duplex units. So, everybody, I know that, that it all ties together, but that's actually item number four on that. What you need to ask him is about...
Yeah, but it all ties together to deal what, what he's gonna do. If, item number eight on your economic development contract says Rowland agrees that it will pay for replacement of water line and meter to serve the facility along electric lines meter or meters to which Rowland shall connect to service for new homes, which is the water and sewer taps. So to stay true to, stay on track, he needs to ask you about number eight on this contract and then number eight on number three. And then bring up what he's talking about now on item number four.
So I guess I'm done with item number two.
So you're asking about the tax thing that says you're paying. Okay. All right, you, you're okay with being that way?
I'm fine with the way that the agreement sort of being, having a setback. Included so that I don't end up with a tight measurement line between the, so because I'm giving up twenty feet, I don't wanna then have a setback from that twenty foot line. Another fifteen feet. I don't wanna do that. I would rather have it, let's say, included in that.
You wanna talk about that, Mike?
Uh, sorry, the setbacks, good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the words is describe certain setbacks in, in all the different areas, especially residential, because we don't want houses to be too tight next to each other. And so some of the setbacks will have high meaning to low density. Instead of getting over neighborhood you ran, you'll have to fall in that setback in order to build that kind of, or that size of a building.
So let me ask you this, just bouncing ideas off of you. If we had a line in this contract that said, if the council approved it, that said something to the fact that, uh, that he can encroach on the setback per code enforcement or fire marshal's discretion.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that we could do. And you take into consideration the setback of, we wanna be very careful on how we do that because if there's another home or something right next to that, we kinda wanna be careful. But if there's nothing adjoining you, you know, adjacent from that, then an exception would be reasonable.
It's all, it's performance.
Right.
So, and, and the only thing back there is a walking trail of woods.
Right.
All the way around that. So if they approve that with that exception in there, you could monitor that and move forward with this without having to come back.
Yeah, that, I mean, with that exception, we could pass it by.
Because again, the measurements that I put on here fit, but it's very tight. And when I do the survey, which is also part of the deal that's on the contract, if I end up losing a few feet on the back end of it, I've gotta shove everything over to stay off that property line. I wanna be able to have a little bit of fluff in that dimension to be able to push over into the twenty feet that's been required from the city.
So you're not sure you'd use it, but you'd like to have access to it?
I'm not gonna put any building on it at all. I just want it to be part of some of the setback that's required for the permit. Yeah, because things are not out there, the dimensions and layout, the way it shows on the drawing. It wasn't like that on the other one either.
So how about that, no reason, Jerry? How about that reason? You know, let me, let me ask you one more question, one more thing. It says, and I was looking for it. Somewhere here it says it's twenty, a twenty foot easement. What if we went to a ten foot easement?
That's fine. You don't have to do anything.
Is that to the street, to the front of the property line?
It's to the property line, but that includes the sidewalk because the property line goes up too close to where the sidewalk is, at least according to the drawing. But I'm okay, yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be more than enough.
Or fifteen, fifteen?
There is. On the north side of this property, off the bridge, going off the bridge.
Yeah, well, the city's gonna have the easement there, twenty foot easement, is that what we're talking about?
That, and he was saying, he was suggesting that maybe we reduce it to ten feet, which gives me an additional ten feet on that dimension that I'm asking. I don't care how you do it.
Or even fifteen. Fifteen would give you five feet.
Yeah, that would probably be enough, yes. I'm just, it's just tight.
I think we can do fifteen feet on the easement.
Off the south side to the house.
If we, if we change number three to a fifteen foot easement, that would fix his problems on this contract.
That's true.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, discussion of possible action to enter into an economic development agreement with Kevin Rowland on north ninety feet of block fourteen and fifteen and all of the sixteen, block six, approve an additional.
You don't really have any additions to this, the contract that, um, they gave me to look at and review and made a couple of adjustments on, but I think it's okay. I don't really have any issues with it. I don't, I don't think so.
We'll make a motion, please, please.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, item number four, discussion of possible action to modify its prior economic department agreement with Kevin Rowland on south fifteen, uh, blocks ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, block six, approve an addition.
So this is what he was talking about. This is a signed agreement that's been done for the duplex that you have copied, Doug, that one is looking at.
And it starts with two, item three, shows a picture of what we built. Um, item four is a picture of the inside, one picture of it. And then item five is just a picture of the lots as they were before we did it.